All the Finance Committee meeting in order for Monday, October 28th, 2019. The first item I have on tonight's agenda is Resolution 131-19. That's a resolution to appropriate $4,996 into Water Fund 603. This is coming through Water, Water Pollution. Mr. Woodger.
Oh, Mr. Nixon? I might get there.
There it is.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this is a damage claim that we, unfortunately, as a result of the Union Mulberry Storm Sewer Job and the planned renovations, we are going to replace those lines. And unfortunately, as we went up through the street and lowered the water lines, we must have hit the top of the sanitary sewer lateral at this house. The residents started having problems on July 4th, naturally, as all things would happen. They were proactive, called a contractor. The contractor came out, did some video inspection. His camera was off a little bit, so he dug out near the sidewalk, got down to the pipe. The pipe was in good shape. Looked further out in the street, appeared to be a problem. So our crews went in on July the 5th and went in the main line, shot up the lateral, and found that right at the waterline trench, the lateral was broke. So we then dug up the trench, made the repair, and then the contractor had this amount of expense in doing the work that they did. Unfortunately, the law director is not here. As typical protocol, when there's a damage claim, the resident submits a damage claim to the law director's office. The law director then reviews it with our insurance carrier to see if it's a valid claim or not. It is a valid claim. This is something that wasn't insurable, thus we're not paying just the deductible. So if at all possible, the halls paid this out a while back. If at all possible, if we can go first reading suspension and get them their money back, I'd appreciate it.
I was going to ask about that, because it said we have two readings, and I felt like if we were giving somebody money back, probably should go two.
I see the clerk raising her hand. If she's got an agreement with them, two readings would be fine.
Okay. The insurance company is working on the release. Until the release is signed and in our hands, the check will not be released.
Okay. So do we think that'll be in the next couple of weeks, or?
Yeah. So we have a meeting next Monday, so we could actually go two readings.
Okay, that's fine.
Next Monday, we can go two then. Is two okay then?
That works for me.
Any questions for Mr. Nixon on this?
Mr. Hall will be my second.
Mr. Hall's the second, and we will go two readings. All right, very good. Thank you, sir. Next item I have is Resolution 132-19. That's a resolution to appropriate $25,000 into the General Fund 101. This is, in the absence of the law director not being here, this is more money for legal expense for expenses associated with legal services related to personnel matters, arbitration, and union negotiations. I think these are currently ongoing. Well, yeah, maybe the Service Safety Director can add some color to that.
Yes, and I would just, you got three out of the four. One is representation through a BWC cases.
Okay.
So those are four items, and so that's currently going. Everything that we're talking about here is currently ongoing. Health insurance, openers with police and fire being some of those. So those are the things that I can tell you. I hope that satisfies you, where we don't have to go into executive session to talk about suspensions.
So this is for the remainder of the year. Is there any hurry, I mean, do you need the money quickly? Two readings?
Say, two readings, mostly so we can satisfy auditor nettles on trying to get payment done before the end of the year. I just pointed her out because, anyway.
Any questions for the Service Safety Director on this? Yes, Mrs. Bobbitt.
Just real quick, did you say Bureau of Workmen's Comp? I didn't hear you. Okay. All right, thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, we'll go two readings, and Mr. McDaniel, will you second this, please?
Yes, sir.
Two readings on 132-19. The next item I have is 133-19. That's a resolution to create a new fund for the hotel motel tax 855 and to create revenue and expense accounts. I don't know how much clearer that could be. Auditor nettles, do you have anything to add to that?
Nope. This is just to help facilitate, when the income tax department brings in the hotel motel tax, it's not convoluted in with other, with workers' comp and everything else. It's to isolate it, so it makes it an ease of what, to track of what's come in and what has yet to come.
Okay. What's your timing on this?
Three readings is fine.
Any questions for the auditors? Seeing none, Mrs. Downhour, will you second that, please?
Yep.
We will go three readings on 133-19. And since we're creating more expense accounts, let's just do a little more of that. Let's have a resolution to create a new fund for Bureau of Workmen's Comp 850 and to create new revenue and expense accounts. And again, auditor nettles, do you want to provide some wisdom on this?
Yes, this one here is, it was kind of, ever since Workers' Comp came to current year for billing, it became a more of, I was paying the whole city's Workers' Comp bill out of an agency fund, and then drawing in and pulling in every department's to pay that. So basically, paying the bill on the city's PNC card, P-card, and then having everybody reimburse that account. But when it was convoluted with hotel motel, all of that, it became tedious to kind of track all those monies when you had more than just BWC. So this is isolating BWC, so it's easier to track the ins, the ins and the outs coming in for the city's BWC payment.
Perfect. Any questions on this? How many readings? Three readings on this one as well?
Three, yes.
And our, Mr. McDaniel, will you second this, please?
Yes.
Three readings then on 134-19. Next item I have is 135-19. That's a resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into an engineering contract. This is coming through Water, Water Pollution. Mr. Woodger.
Denise is on her way.
Thank you. It's that time of year for annual legislation. This is our annual contract with Holland Associates for General Engineering Service, General Engineering and Inspection Service. We just issue a contract with them, and then when we need them to answer a question, do some geotax, some questions with hazardous material, anything like that, we have a way for them to bill us. This also covers inspection services, and we are going to start kicking off projects very early in the new year, so I'd like to have this contract in place.
Okay. Questions for Denise? Mrs. Bobbitt.
Is this something that we don't need to go out to bid for? I mean, do we always just use them? Forgive me for not remembering, but do we always use them?
We did a request for proposals, or a request for qualifications a few years ago and selected them.
Okay.
Further questions? Seeing none, what is your timing?
Three readings, and since Mr. McDaniel is doing your last one, he'll do mine next.
Well, there you go. Mr. McDaniel will do that. We'll go three readings on 135-19. Next item I have on tonight's agenda is Resolution 136-19. That's a resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract for inspection services. This is coming through Water, Water Pollution. Mr. Woodger.
And again, I have Denise up there.
This is our annual contract for Ben Warner, who's our contract inspector. Ben's been with us since 2004 and does just an excellent job. He's going to be on the Fifth, Sixth, Forest Rose project for a full year. That's why the amount is so high. We have him actually committed for a full year on that. And this will be covered by our OWDA loan, so this will be coming out of the loan fund.
Okay. Questions for Denise on this piece?
Again, this is one that we want to have him signed up for a full year rather than have to come back, and he's not available.
Okay. What's your timing?
Three readings, and Mr. Hall will.
All right, we will go three readings on 136-19 with Mr. Hall as the second. Next item I have on tonight's agenda is Resolution 137-19. That's a resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to award a contract for the Fifth, Sixth, Forest Rose Sewer Separation Project. Again, coming through Water, Water Pollution. Mr. Woodger.
And I have Denise with me.
We opened bids for the Fifth, Sixth, Forest Rose project two weeks ago and got a very nice surprise. The engineer's estimate was just a tad over $4 million, and the bid came in with an alternate at just under $3 million. So, yeah, we're very excited. And the low bidder is Truco Construction, and they have a very good reputation, so we're looking forward to working with them. They're going to be starting just after the new year. This is part of the OWDA loan, zero interest loan that we're getting, and we have to submit this resolution with the bid package as part of our loan process. So if I can get a suspension after two readings, that would be great.
Questions on this for Denise?
Rather than a question, a comment. Again, this one, we were very pleased with the bid coming in low, because as you know, right now in construction work, there's a lot of, lot of projects out there, so companies are tended to bid a little higher on a lot of things than we've been expecting, so we were very surprised with this one.
All right, who's your second?
My second will be Mr. McDaniel's, and we'll go two readings.
We'll go two readings on 137-19 with Mr. McDaniel as the second. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item I have is Resolution 138-19. That's a resolution to accept and appropriate funds for the 2019 City of Lancaster CDBG entitlement program. This is coming through Economic Development. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, this is our annual CDBG entitlement program. It's the, we had public hearings on this, and when Mary Jo spoke about it, we went through a lot of these items, had lengthy discussion. I don't know if the Safety Director, do we have a preference on the number of readings for this?
I think one would like this passed.
I know that she intended to have this here last meeting and wasn't able to get it forward last meeting, so.
So council already approved all the allocations. HUD has approved all this, and it's just back, this is just the money to appropriate so they can actually write the checks.
Yes.
And the money is waiting.
One reading on that.
Questions for the administration? Yes, Mr. Woodger.
Just a question. I was expecting this last meeting. Mary Jo had indicated that it was ready to go. Did administration hold it up till this meeting, or why did we wait?
No, actually, Mary Jo has been ill and has been in and out of the hospital, so she hoped to be here for this, and we thought she would be here this evening, but she's not, so we'll go from there.
Council's already approved all the allocations. It's going up to HUD. HUD has approved everything. This is just to appropriate the money that they've awarded.
Mr. Hall, do you have a question?
Yeah, just real quickly, is this the amount that we'd expected and had budgeted in this line item?
Yes.
Yeah, there are no changes.
No changes.
Mr. Graff?
Yeah, just a comment per Mr. Woodger's question also, and in response to Mr. McDaniel, the last Economic Development meeting on September 19th, it was indicated that this legislation was ready at that point, I believe. And then we've had two meetings since then, so this is the third meeting since then in order to get this.
If I may, I believe she had some medical issues and was unable to get this portion to us as timely as she would have liked. She had every intention to do it, but was unable to do it, and it is prepared now. It is not a surprise. We know what's in it. We know what to expect. It's been openly discussed and going over many times, both at Economic Development Committee meeting and here at council. She fully intended to have this a couple of meetings ago and just was unable to do so.
And I would have to offer that in all the years I've sat here, she's always been timely with legislation, so this isn't, this is clearly around health issues that I believe she's having, and that's really, aside from the lateness of this, it's no one else is really concerned. Nevertheless, that's the issue, and she has an impeccable track record. So if there are issues with suspension on federally funded monies that's being appropriated to us in the amount we expected after all the public hearings and all the legislations we passed, then go ahead and vote no on suspension. So, anyway, any other questions on this? Mr. McDaniel, use your second, please.
Mrs. Downhour?
Thank you. So we will ask for suspension on 138-19. Next item I have is 139-19. That is a resolution to appropriate $30,000 into the Stormwater Fund 606 for the Hunter's Run Conservancy District. This is coming through Finance, and I am, we had a presentation about the Hunter's District last meeting, but this is a stormwater appropriation. Denise, do you have any, can you add to this, please, as I'm muddling my way through it?
Basically, under our stormwater permit from the Ohio EPA, we're required to evaluate flood control projects for water quality issues, and this just passes that duty over to Hunter's Run with a one-time $30,000 grant.
Okay. Are there any questions on this? Mrs. Bobbitt.
Have we ever granted them funds before?
They've never asked, and I think Lindy explained that at the last meeting, that they've just really been behind on things. So this is, this is a chance for them to get catch, excuse me, to get caught up, and as they do those repairs, then to do the stormwater activity.
Mr. Woodger?
Okay, I have several concerns on this. One, I was aware of this about three months ago, and understood it was coming through water wastewater, because this is a water wastewater issue, even though it's a finance issue.
You can have it.
But, so my concern is why did it come through you, other than the fact I had let it be known at that time I had concerns with it. Secondly, originally, this was a request, I believe, for a $50,000 loan, which the administration decided we would make a grant. And with that, I have a concern of using ratepayers' money to grant to outside people for services that we can use that money for in wastewater. So I do have some concerns on this one.
Further comments? Anything else to offer? I mean, can you tell us how this $30,000 from stormwater will help mitigation with stormwater issues that would occur?
Well, the Conservancy District structures do help with flooding, and at the time they were built, they lowered the flood elevation in the city by about half a foot, which is a major decrease. I don't want to confuse stormwater with flooding. They're like step siblings. They're kind of related, but not. But as the district makes repairs, one of the things that they're dealing with is erosion and sediment, and so this money will assist them in those repairs to reduce erosion and sediment.
Are there others that are helping participating in this funding of the district? And it looks like, Paul, did you have a comment that?
Yes. Denise is doing a good job. I've been involved with this probably for about two years. Originally, Mr. Woodger is correct, there was an option to consider a loan, but as it was looked into further, there's been, I'm going to use this word, there was a lot of, a board that did not exist, one member instead of three, so they couldn't vote on anything. So there was a lot of neglect of these structures throughout our county, and it would adversely affect us if there was any failure of these structures. So the county was working with me. I had Mitch Nolan involved as well. Denise knows a lot about these districts. They're all over our state, of course, as you found out last time, but we realized that we need to see an improvement, and Lindy referred to it last week. They get about $67,000 a year, but Judge Tremor is considering things and trying to get a better funding mechanism. So this is a one-time offer. They went from a borrowing loan to, we have really serious problems there. There needs to be some maintenance issues done right now. Some other funds are going to be used on engineering things to determine the level of, what property owners could actually start paying towards this on our property tax, which per law would be, Judge Tremor right now is the one that hears that case. So they're making, they have a full board, three members. They're very active, literally volunteering their time to get out there. And so the county is putting in just over $30,000. There was a need for about $62,000, $63,000, and we are splitting that need with the county. The county is the other one, the county commissioners, and you'll see the agreement that I made with them was with them. They have funded our portion through this summer with what we had going on and things. They said, just get us the money at the end of the year. We will give this entire amount to the district so they can get the job done, the work done, which has been done. There's an agreement, an adjustment on the agreement here, because they couldn't get those vendors, they thought, they had to realign that, even though money is still the same, the work was done correctly. But they are taking steps to have better funding so that we would not have to do this again, and so I only agreed to a one-time, which is what the commissioners want to see themselves.
Could Judge Tremor impose, you know, a required stipend from the city and any other governmental agencies and residents for that matter? I'm just curious.
So Denise could probably answer that as well. We do have property in this district that we have been paying a portion to the district, Conservancy District, for years. And so when there is an increase, that does affect us, which we have been paying towards that.
So I can address that also. Every property owner in the City of Lancaster that's in the Hunter's Run water area pays an assessment on our real estate taxes every year. The city actually pays $9,000 a year in an assessment to the Hunter's Run Conservancy District, as imposed by Judge Tremor. And he has the power to do that unilaterally. He can set what the assessments are, and I believe he's in the process of increasing them at some point.
Okay. Further questions? Any other information that, I guess, I assume we're going through readings, there's no rush on this?
Well, the only reason I mentioned readings is so that we can get the check cut and just help the end-of-year accounting was the only reason I suggest, but if we go three, we can make that work.
Well, I think we ought to know from, at least for my, you know, to make me feel a little more whole about this, I'd like to understand what the, what the funding was used for as far as their maintenance activities. I don't know that I really got that clearly from Lindy the other day. So I'd like to kind of see, hey, you know, what did you get from the county and the city, and what have you done with it, just so we understand what that is.
So if you look at the agreement, those details are in the agreement, and the amendment to that agreement specifies how those funds were split up with what literally contractors were in contract and the services that they provided. And so that's why you have an amendment to the original agreement. And then we also have on an attachment, we have an attachment, a spreadsheet there that shows you the breakout of those funds, the total funds. Now remember, we're contributing with the county. The county gave about $32,000 and something, we're about $30,000.
Would you do me a favor and invite Mr. Jackson to the next Finance Committee?
He would love to, yes. I anticipated to have him at one other, not every, but I will be glad to have him here. Yes.
Yes, Mr. Woodger?
Even though I have problems with this, one positive comment is, this has been a very poorly operated board in the past, is not having, and everything, not getting the job done and not using their funds well, but the current board with Lindy Jackson on seems to be doing an excellent job as far as trying to get things turned around, so I will welcome that.
Okay, well, good, and we'll get, we'll hear from Lindy next time, and then perhaps we could have suspension then, or we let it go a full three readings. Right now, we'll plan it for three, and then we'll have the, we'll have Mr. Jackson here to kind of go through that, just to kind of summarize. We won't let him go on and on. He'll get, he's got three minutes, all right? Let him know to be brief, you know, he's no Mike Nixon, all right? All right, so.
He could probably send Nixon to talk for him.
Well, he probably could, on the topic.
Mr. Goodwin, you're going to respond to this, right?
No, unless you want to. Mrs. Downhour, one second, we'll plan for three readings, and we'll have Mr. Jackson at the next meeting. So moving on, the next item I have are, is, are ordinances 21 and 22, and then, and those are the annual, my two least favorite ordinances on the planet. These are the developer notes and the Edie Road Tiff notes that are going to go on into perpetuity but are required to be passed by council each year. Auditor nettles, would you add some color to these, please?
Yes, these are the ones that also give me an eye twitch as well. At year-end, it's an annual piece, it's for the Edie Road Tiff. 20, or temporary ordinance 21-19 is for the debt on the letter of credit that the city pulled for Island Capital at the beginning or on start, or a little bit at the beginning portion of the Tiff district. So it's something that through the proceeds that we get through the county audit every year, we're paying them back a principal and interest payment on that. Of course, after the city's debt payments are paid first. And the temporary ordinance 22-19 is for the developer note debt, and we're paying them back as well through the proceeds we get through the real estate quarters, I mean halves, every year. And, but again, the city pays our debt on that first, and then the developers get a portion of that to pay principal and interest.
Do we have time for three readings, or are these two readings?
Yes, these are three. Lovely, which predated me, they made this debt come due December 31st, my favorite time of the year.
Okay, yeah, everybody loves that. Any questions on these? These are the annual pieces. They're the ones we hate to love and love to hate, but we will go three readings on each one. 21 will be seconded by Holly Downhour, please, and Don McDaniel, if you'll do 22. And thank you for adding color to those, because I don't like them. So three readings on 21 and 22. Next ordinance I have on tonight's agenda is ordinance 23-19. This is the annual financing ordinance for the cost overruns of the municipal court building being paid back by the municipal court, but because they're a city entity, we have to update the loan agreement each year. They were paying this down $180,000 a year for 10 years through 2026, and they paid $180,000 last year. So this is the latest renewal of that note. Any questions on that? This is not city money, it's coming from the municipal court. Seeing the three readings still there? Okay, so we'll go three readings on this. This is Downhour, would you please second that? And, all right. Any departmental updates?
Good evening. I wanted to give you, council, a little bit of an update on what LDOT has done over on the Hawken River. We got with stormwater, and we bought three new check valves for the end, for three of the main outfalls coming into the Hawking. We took the old, the old steel flap gates off the ends, and we put new ones in the pipes. So what should happen is these new checks should minimize how much upstream flooding there is coming back from the river when the river comes up. These will not let any water back. The only downfall to that is there's still upstream water coming down, so, excuse me, we don't know exactly what, how to quantify that, or at least I don't. Depending on the durations, the type of storms, realistically, it could help minimize the amount of flooding. These are not going to stop any of the flooding, but it should help minimize some of it. But we've got them at Mulberry Street, West Mulberry Street, West Main Street, and Center Street. We've got one more to put in at the end of Seventh Street, but we've got to replace that pipe going through the levee right there first. So once that's done, there'll be a check in that area as well. So that should help with stopping backflow from the river, so.
Questions? Mrs. Bobbitt?
Question, comment? I mean, there's some uncertainty here, but one of the, you know, when we had folks come in, one of their concerns was that they feel that the water was coming back in, so.
And that is, and that is a reality. I mean, I've got pictures from years and past floods. I mean, I've got pictures from years and past floods where I can show you water coming out of an inlet. So yes, that is a concern. What we, you might still see some of that, but it's going to be coming from upstream as opposed from the river, so.
Further questions?
Actually, I just want to make a comment. I thank you for trying something, because it, I mean, I know it's going to be flooding still, but hopefully it'll alleviate it, and I really appreciate trying something out there to try to help that.
Yeah, so, I mean, like I said, depending on the severity, the duration, how fast the river comes up, you know, is going to depend on whether we get anything back or how much we get going out, so. But the one thing, these are, these types of valves are basically 100% sealed. So when they get back, when they get backflow, they will seal up 100%. So they're not going to let anything back, so.
Further questions, comments? Very good, thank you, sir. Further updates?
Mitch Nolan is homesick, so I wanted to let you know that signs have been posted for the Timbertop rezoning at the Timbertop property. City Planning Commission will have a public hearing on the rezoning on November 14th at their regular meeting in City, Second Floor City Hall. Information on the Timbertop rezoning has been placed on the city webpage. The easiest place to find it is through the City Planning Commission page, but there are also links on the engineering and certified building pages.
I have a question. Is there a, is there like a timeline of activities or a list of activities that would occur before this would be completely, you know, rezoned if everything were approved? Or is it just a bunch of information about the rezoning? I mean, that's the questions I'm getting. I mean, the question, because I'm guessing somewhere in here it says, "And declare an emergency." The people are implying that we're racing to hurry up and change this without public comment, and that's seriously not the case.
I can certainly put a timeline together and put it on. So what will happen is Planning Commission will have a public hearing, they will make a recommendation to City Council. City Council then has a set period of time. Planning Commission has a set period of time to make that recommendation to City Council, and then you have a set period of time to take action, and of course, you can't take action on something that's not part of the city, so it's tied to the annexation. But I can certainly put that together and put it on the webpage.
Yeah, if you just kind of follow this wonderful list that I was just handling for the regular annexation by the ORC 709 and 3, didn't it, by the clerk? If you run in alignment with that, that would work really cool, so. But yeah, if you put that up there, it will help answer a lot of questions, because we have a lot of, I'm sorry.
I was just going to add to what Denise said. So as we know, with any type of zoning change, including this, would be the establishment of zoning for annexed property. As Denise said, it goes before Planning Commission, they have a public hearing, they make a recommendation to this body. We have an ordinance in here now that is before us, but we'll have to table that due to timing or whatever of readings. But that recommendation comes from Planning Commission to City Council. City Council then has to conduct a public hearing on a zoning change, so it comes up again for another public hearing, and at which time, this is one, if you recall correctly, if council by ORC, if council adopts Planning Commission's recommendation in whole, you know, exactly as it was presented to council, it's just a simple majority vote. If council decides that they want to modify that in any way, then it requires a two-thirds vote or whatever in order to modify that. So there is quite a process here, and this isn't something that just happens in the dark overnight. Like I said, you'll have a public hearing at Planning Commission and other public hearing here. And as Denise said also, we don't even do anything with it until the property is actually, you know, we pass that ordinance to adopt the zoning for the annexed property on the same night that we basically pass our ordinance to accept the annexation into the city. And with that, county commissioners basically have to approve the annexation. It then gets certified and sent down to the city, and then the ORC states that no sooner than 60 days, but no later than 120 days, City Council basically has to accept or reject that annexation. So a lot of time built into this, this is not an overnight kind of thing.
And I appreciate that, and I just think if, this is just another way to be very transparent on the process, because it is very detailed, and, but I'm guessing the ordinance has the word "emergency" in there, which makes, you know, makes it feel like we're going to hurry up and do this very quickly, and that's not, seriously.
And if you go to the zoning commission's website, they have a very good map on showing exactly what zoning is being proposed and everything, and I think they also states there that it's November 14th at 9:30 is the public hearing.
Further comments? Is that all you had?
That's it.
Very good, thank you. Further departmental updates? Seeing none, I will pass to President Zul for tonight's meeting prep.
Thank you, Mr. Trimmer. We have two ordinances coming through tonight under my part of the meeting prep. Temporary ordinance 2419 to supersede a previous easement with South Central Power. Come through, Mr. Graff.
This is in relation to a new easement to replace a previous easement due to development that is planned in the area. Past that, I will throw it to Randall.
Thank you, Councilman Graff. Yeah, this is, this particular easement is exactly how he stated, they just need to surrender the old one and have a new one. This is also needed as part of the Magnusian of America development that we've got going on out there, so this is to help facilitate getting power and everything to them. So in light of that, we would ask for two readings and suspension if we could, just to keep that project moving forward.
So you're requesting two readings, Mr. Graff?
Two readings, and Mr. Hall would second if he will.
So two readings on temporary ordinance 2419 with Mr. Hall as the second. Temporary ordinance 2519, an ordinance to amend Chapter 183 of LCO, this coming from Finance, Mr. Stotin.
So this is in alignment with, I believe, House Bill 166, which modified the, or amended the definition of pension and retirement benefit plan. So in alignment with that, we have to change our ordinance to match House Bill 166, which is what this does. So we don't have a choice, we have to adopt this and include this in our tax. Any questions on this? I think we'll just go a full, full three is fine? Okay, it'll be effective, I assume it's effective next tax year.
That's January.
Yeah, January 1, 2020, so. So we'll go full three readings, and being an odd number, that will go to Mrs. Down.
Three readings on temporary ordinance 2519, Mr. Downhour as the second. That's all I have, the top's back to Jim.
Thank you. Are there any other items for Finance? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sound made.
And a second.
Second.
Mr. President, you are adjourned.
It is 6:38. The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will begin at approximately 6:40.
Is no place like Lancaster, Ohio, and Fairfield County, and like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cop State, to be a part of Shop With a Cop alongside the Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful and just as important that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at 740-654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, ConnorInsuranceAgency.com.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. Due to the recent success of the new car market, there is a large inventory of used cars available for resale. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for. With over 15 years at this location and 27 years' experience in the business, we are the best place to go to find your next car, truck, van, or SUV. As a member of the Better Business Bureau, we are a Carfax Advantage dealer and offer great financing rates through a local area bank, with warranties available on most vehicles. We know your time is valuable, so we take special pride in making sure that you get what you came for at a price that you can afford.
Come into Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at CarriageCompany.com.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home in Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Please join me in a word of prayer. Father, thank you for this day and your many blessings. Thank you for how you continue to lead, guide, and direct us. We pray you would do so tonight as we go about the business set before us. May we all do what is in the best interest of the citizens of Lancaster. We ask in Jesus's name, amen. And hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Graff?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Mr. Stotin?
Here.
Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Mr. Woodruff?
Yes.
The record reflects that all nine members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance, waiting and disposing of the journals.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated October 14, 2019.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Other communications?
These came after I left work, I'm going to read them from my phone, I'm not being rude, please. Email dated today regarding the draft 2020 City Council budget submitted by Mr. Stotin, and an email dated today referenced the elected official pay ordinance from Mr. Stotin.
To be clear, those are reports of city officials. Does that go further?
Oh, and I just automatically in the same thing?
You did, anyway, then those were the reports of city officials, very good.
All right. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now communications.
Communications, there is one. Email dated October 14, 2019 regarding ribbon-cutting imitation Hunter Park playground submitted by Joan Miller. If you did not receive that in your email, please let me know, it is scheduled for tomorrow, I believe.
Four o'clock.
At four o'clock.
Tomorrow, four, yes.
And that is all I have.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have no special presentations or awards tonight, are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
At this time, we set time aside at each of our meetings to allow all the voters and taxpayers of the City of Lancaster to address City Council on any item or issue with that. If you'd like to address Lancaster City Council tonight, we invite you to come forward to the podium, sign in with your name and address, and state the same for the record. Please note that while members of City Council will not respond to you during this portion of the meeting, they may choose to do so at a time later in the meeting. Further, we ask in accordance with the rules of City Council that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. With that, is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council tonight? Yes, Ms. Probasco.
Good evening. Debbie Probasco, 850 Second Street. And I'm here to talk about the light at Broad and Hubert. I'm going to pass around, give you all a copy of a two-day study that was done by Lancaster Police Department. The start date was October the 15th, the end date was October the 17th. You can look at that at your leisure, it gives you a little bit of a clue, this is only southbound traffic. The northbound and the Hubert studies will be done once Hubert Avenue is, remained open. Currently, it's been being closed for work, I guess, by the water department. With that being said, they were closing Hubert Avenue at the intersection of Broad and Hubert. Late last week, they moved that closure to Broad at the turn-left lane, because too many cars were turning left while they were trying to do the construction on the road. So today, I had two people counting the cars that were running East Clark Street, both directions, east and west. There were 248 cars from 8:05 this morning until 3:15 this afternoon. Those are the hours that Hubert Avenue was shut down. Those are only the cars on Clark, not on Iman, not on Third, not on Second, East Clark only, which those are the cars that would normally be running on Hubert Avenue. I had two people do this count for me today. Both of them nearly had heart failure, because so many people, the drivers, were not stopping when they came to the intersection at Second Street. They were actually running out in the street yelling at the drivers to stop. Tires were squealing, near misses all day long. That's 248 cars, just today. Currently, we have, the block watch has 752 signatures. I really would like for the Service Safety Director and the mayor to sit down and talk with us privately about doing something about the center section at Broad and Hubert, making it safe for our neighbors. I don't care if you have to write a grant. You tell me, wait till the levy comes, passes. I don't have a guarantee if the levy passes that you're going to do it. You can tell me that, doesn't mean you're going to do it. Because from what I'm seeing, pretty much levy money is going to be taken care of if it passes. That money's probably already debited out. So I need you to work with us, come up with a safe solution, because I know you've all heard the saying, "There's always someone over somebody," and the same goes with government. So I appreciate it, if you two gentlemen would get with us, sit down and talk to us, and work something out concerning this intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Probasco, thank you for being here. Is there anyone else who would like to address? Is there anyone else who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening?
I signed up, but Debbie has more to offer than my time served.
I think, okay, well, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else who would like to address City Council this evening? Ms. Burnside.
Good evening. My name is Diane Wogan Burnside. I reside on Quell Meadows Drive in the city of Lancaster. I received a letter from the Committee to Invest in Lancaster. I realized that this was a request, when I began to read it, to vote yes on the income tax levy that citizens will be voting on in the next few days to come. As I had never heard of this committee, I sent an email to Mayor Scheffler to ask some questions about it, since he is listed as the chairman of the committee. And the mayor sent me a prompt response, answering most of my questions, who was on it, the mayor, Tim Otney, Bob Wolfinger, and Orman Hall, and that it's a nonpartisan group, although it is all made up of one particular party. No city funds being used, that contributions are collected privately, and a few other answers. But the one he didn't respond to has me bothered, and has been, since the income tax levy was passed in these chambers to be presented to the voters. Item four in this letter indicates that an independent citizens task force reviewed the city finances, income, and expenses, and recommended the need for an income tax increase. I questioned this as I read their presentation, and I was present in count and chambers when the task force presented their seven options to address the revenue issues the city is facing. And anyone can read this information, as it can be found in the Agenda Center, City Council Meetings, June 10, 2019. Scenario one was presented that dwelt with the income tax increase, roll back 1% income tax currently received by commuters over a five-year period at a rate of 2%. Two to six lay out various revenue streams to endure bond compliance, maintain solvency, and so forth, but they also said that generate additional revenue for capital needs such as a new fire station. And I know there's been some questions about the counting of the fire runs, if the ones that were canceled are included in the count of runs entirely. I've heard in City Council, someone from the fire department say that they were combined, but I've also been told there's a new system that's being used, and I'd like to know which is which. The task force ended their project presentation with this closing. Please be advised that we do not feel that is within our assignment to make specific recommendations, but rather to provide carefully researched information and options that elected officials can make the informed decisions. I found it interesting that this hot group presented this at the same meeting that Resolution 66-19 was discussed and passed by council with a vote of six to three. Randy Groff, Becky Teener, and Jerry Woodard voting no. This resolution was passed to permit the possibility of 100% property tax abatement up to 15 years on any new structure housing three or more apartments, and that this abatement would be via approved by a housing committee yet to be determined. Now, as I see that the old schoolhouse activity, add the building of condos on the playground area, that the space that has sat empty for so long on the corner of Main and Memorial will have new apartments built, rumored to be about $1,000 a month to rent, and 300 units being added to Timber Top. Is that a coincidence? I guess that an HOC group telling the city that we're in financial woes, but then passing a resolution that offers up to 100% property tax abatement, which would have generated revenue to the city up to 15 years, is confusing to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Mr. Walker. For time's sake, if you don't mind, go ahead and start your comments and sign in after. That'd be great. Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right. My name is Tim Walker. I live at 798 Cherokee Drive. Like Mrs. Burnside, my household also received this letter from Investment in Lancaster. And I guess I read it, and it's not much different than any time. You know, we always talk about, you know, over expenditures and things that are going on, and 5,000 people moving into Lancaster in the last 10 years, which I don't really think that's too much to brag about. But, and we have questions about fire runs, but my biggest one is the fourth one. An independent citizens task force reviewed the city finances, incomes, and expenditures, and recommended. That irritates me. I was sitting in this chamber when that report was given, and I know for a fact that they told you they wouldn't make a recommendation. Now, that's one of two things. That's either one big misleading statement or a bold-faced lie. Now, we can all stand and look at our shoes and say, you know, well, what is it? Well, you draw your own conclusion, but to me, it's a lie. That's all I really have to say. I support what Ms. Burnside had to say, but you should be ashamed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Is there anyone else who would like to address Lancaster City Council tonight? Well, thank each of you for being here this evening. Are there any reports of standing committees?
Finance Committee meeting minutes for October 14, 2019 submitted by Mr. Stoughton. Water Water Police Control Committee meeting minutes for October 16, 2019 submitted by Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees tonight?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearing, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Resolution 113-19.
A resolution authorizing the law director to negotiate and enter into a contract with the city of Pickerington for prosecution of cases arising from criminal and other offenses that occur in the county, the city of Pickerington, Fairfield County, Ohio, and to accept payment offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary 113-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 113-19. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is an annual activity that the law director has to go through with Pickerington and Reynoldsburg, and I think in the case of 115, I think the county may be a multi-year at times. But all three of these are negotiations for, obviously, prosecution services, so I'm not going to give a comment on all three, but understand that all three are the same, and they're all negotiated items that come through the law department.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton, for the discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 113-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 114-19.
A resolution authorizing the law director to negotiate and enter into a contract with the city of Reynoldsburg for prosecution of cases arising from criminal and other offenses that occur in the city of Reynoldsburg within Fairfield County, Ohio, and to accept payment offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary 114-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 114-19. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 114-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 115-19.
A resolution authorizing the law director to negotiate and enter into a contract with the Fairfield County Commissioners for prosecution of cases arising from criminal and other offenses that occur in the unincorporated areas and villages within Fairfield County, Ohio, and to accept payment offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary 115-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 115-19. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you.
Any discussion around the table? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 115-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 117-19.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Fairfield County General Health District for public health services offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary 117-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 117-19. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The city is required to provide certain health services. We choose to contract with the county and the general health district to do that. This is a two-year contract that will expire at the end of 2021.
Thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 117-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 119-19.
A resolution scheduling Lancaster City Council meetings for 2020 offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Groff?
Yes, this is a piece of legislation setting the council meetings for next year.
Very good. What's your pleasure?
I would like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution 119-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 1-119-19. Further discussion, Mr. Groff? Other discussion around the table? Mr. Woodard?
I just have a concern. I expressed earlier in the year that, you know, it used to be we took July off because everybody scheduled their vacation during that time. We found, especially this year, vacations ended up coming at other times, and people may have had to miss maybe one meeting in order to have vacation. I think that July is a very poor time to go with one meeting because a lot of legislation needs to come forth. I know out of my committee, water wastewater, we have a ton of legislation that we need to do over the summer, and having those law, that long law between the last meeting in June and the meeting in July, and then again from July to the first meeting in August is a problem for my department heads. I think we should have two meetings in July.
Mr. Woodard, further discussion on the motion to pass?
I agree with him. I think, what did we have this month, or I'm sorry, in July, was it three?
We had a special meeting because we needed to have one.
And I do know that it's a busy time of year for different departments, with it being summer and that, and I think it should, you know, should have two meetings in July.
Thank Ms. Teener for the discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
No.
Temporary Resolution 119-19 passes seven to two. Temporary Resolution 120-19.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into an amendment to an engineering agreement for the Fifth Six Forest Rose Project Design offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Woodard?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council suspend its rules and waive the second and, or the, I'm sorry. Back, back up, please. President, I'd like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 120-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 120-19. Discussion, Mr. Woodard?
This department ends up suspending a lot, so I got mixed up there. No, this is one of those, again, to take care of the engineering aspects of the Forest Rose Project, and it was just authorizing him to go ahead with this.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 120-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 121-19.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids for the Union Mulberry Phase Three Storm Sewer Project offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 121-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 121-19. Discussion, Mr. Woodard?
Again, this is in order for us to continue with our projects in wastewater, and this is to take care of the Union Mulberry Phase Three of the stormwater.
Thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 121-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 123-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Park Fund 2012 and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor offered by Mrs. Bobbitt, second by Mr. Woodard.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution Number 123-19.
Mr. Woodard?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 123-19. Discussion, Ms. Bobbitt?
Yes, as it reads, these monies are going, some of these monies are going for maintenance. Our park superintendent came in and this tractor that he's getting, or large mower, he's getting repaired is 13 years old. It's not scheduled to be replaced until 2023 and I think it's somewhere around a $75,000 mower, so that's why we need to get this passed this evening.
Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 123-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 124-19.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Attorney General's Office for the collection of past due tax dollars and non-fail delinquency issues offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary 124-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 124-19. Discussion, Mr. Stotin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We can participate in this program with the Attorney General who will try to collect past due tax, past due tax dollars and also help us find non-filing delinquency issues as well, so we have to pass a resolution to participate in the program.
Thank you, Mr. Stotin. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 124-19 passes nine to zero. We now have second reading on a series of resolutions beginning with Temporary Resolution 127-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund 834, complete a fund transfer, increase receipts and appropriations in the Cemetery Fund 207, and amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover?
Second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 127-19. Temporary Resolution 128-19.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a pre-annexation agreement covering 76.877 plus minus acres in Greenfield Township offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. Groff?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 128-19. Temporary Resolution 129-19.
A resolution indicating services to be provided by the municipal corporation to annex, annex territory of the Methoff Companies LTD, annexation of 76.877 plus minus acres in Greenfield Township offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Groff?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 129-19. We now have first reading on a series of resolutions beginning with Temporary Resolution 131-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Water Fund 603 and amend the certificate with the county auditor offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Woodard?
First reading, please.
First reading on Temporary Resolution 131-19. Temporary Resolution 132-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the General Fund 101 and amend the certificate with the county auditor offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, this funding is to cover legal services related to personnel matters, arbitration, union negotiations, and BWC claims, and this will be the first of two readings, please.
First two readings on Temporary Resolution 132-19. Temporary Resolution 133-19.
A resolution to create a new fund for Hotel Motel Tax 855 and to set up revenue and expense accounts offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are carving out a new fund and expense and revenue accounts for the hotel motel tax for a better and consistent accounting of those expenditures and revenues.
Thank you, Mr. Stotin.
And this is the first of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 133-19. Temporary Resolution 134-19.
A resolution to create a new fund for BWC processing 850 and to set up revenue and expense accounts offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Bureau's Workman's Comp has changed the way they now bill us. Used to be kind of in arrears, now it is on a monthly basis therefore, collecting from the interdepartmental units in the city created quite a mess for the auditor, so she is doing the same here where she's setting up a fund for Bureau's Workman's Comp Processing and setting up the appropriate revenue and expense accounts. This will be the first of three readings, please.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 134-19. Temporary Resolution 135-19.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into an engineering contract offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard?
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 135-19. Temporary Resolution 136-19.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract for inspection services offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Woodard?
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 136-19. Temporary Resolution 137-19.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to award a contract for Fifth Sixth Forest Rose Sewer Separation Project offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard?
First of two readings, please.
First of two readings on Temporary Resolution 137-19. Temporary Resolution 138-19.
A resolution to accept and appropriate funds FY 2019 City of Lancaster Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program offered by Mr. McDaniel, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of Resolution temporarily numbered 138-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of the temporary Resolution 138-19. Discussion, Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, as we spoke at Finance, this is the annual legislation regarding the CDBG block grant. There have been public hearings, both, in addition, both economic development and council have discussed this quite a bit, and this is the submission that we sent in and was approved by the federal government as submitted.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. McDaniel?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution temporarily numbered 138-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 138-19. Further discussion, Mr. McDaniel?
I have nothing.
Other discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
No.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Abstain.
Mr. Stotin?
Abstain.
Mrs. Teener?
Abstain.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 138-19 passes with five yes votes, one no vote, and three abstentions. Temporary Resolution 139-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Stormwater Sewer Fund 606 and amend the certificate with the county auditor for a grant to Fairford County for the Hunter's Run Conservancy District offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a grant from the city to assist with the Hunter's Run Conservancy District of which part of that district resides in the city. We are asking the president of that district, Wendy Jackson, to come speak to Finance Committee and to, actually, the next meeting, which will be the fourth, and this will be the first of three readings.
First of three readings then on Temporary Resolution 139-19. Are there any further resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, then we'll move to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the second reading of Temporary Ordinance 17-19.
An ordinance to amend Ordinance 26-18, repeal and replace existing 26-18, and declare an emergency for the management pay ordinance offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 17-19. Temporary Ordinance 18-19.
An ordinance to change the name of the street known as Anchor Avenue to Magna Avenue in the Rock Mill Corporate Park Phase Two offered by Mr. McDaniel, second by Mr. Groff.
Mr. McDaniel?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 18-19. Temporary Ordinance 19-19.
An ordinance to accept a petition for annexation of 76.877 plus minus acres in Greenfield Township and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. Groff?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 19-19. Temporary Ordinance 20-19.
An ordinance amending the zoning map subject to passage of annexation of 76.877 plus minus acres in Greenfield Township and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Groff?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 20-19. We now have first reading on a series of ordinances beginning with Temporary Ordinance 21-19.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of a revenue note in aggregate principal amount of $315,038.71 to reimburse Flagstar Bank FSB for a draw on a letter of credit in connection with cost of improving Edie Road, Memorial Drive, and Michael's Way by grading, widening, paving, curbing, and improving bridges and railroad crossings, relocating utilities, and installing sidewalks, traffic signals, and signs, and water sanitary and stormwater lines and facilities, together all with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the, specific to the Edie Road Tiff, and this is the debt on the letter of credit by Island Capital, and this will be the first of three readings. First, these are both annual pieces that will be discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Stotin. First of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 21-19. Temporary Ordinance 22-19.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of revenue notes in aggregate principal amount of $1,015,677.54 to pay costs of improving Edie Road, Memorial Drive, and Michael's Way by grading, widening, paving, curbing, and improving bridges and railroad crossings, relocating utilities, and installing sidewalks, traffic signals, and signs, and water sanitary and stormwater lines and facilities, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the developer note that we have to pass every year. This will be the first of three readings on this piece, please.
First of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 22-19. Temporary Ordinance 23-19.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of a note in the maximum principal amount of $1,260,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of the renovation of an existing building for use by City Municipal Court, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the cost overrun, if you will, for the new municipal court building being paid for by the municipal court itself. This is a 10-year note paying back $180,000 a year, and this is the pay down for the next year over the 10-year run that will end in 2026. So this is the first of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 23-19. Temporary Ordinance 24-19.
An ordinance to supersede a previous easement necessary for the construction of electric lines offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Groff?
This is the first of two readings.
First of two readings on Temporary Ordinance 24-19. Temporary Ordinance 25-19.
An ordinance to amend and replace Lancaster Codified Ordinance Part I Administrative Code Title IX Taxation, Chapter 183, Section 183.03, Definitions of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Lancaster, and to repeal existing Part I Administrative Code Title IX Taxation, Chapter 183, Section 183.03, Definitions, and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. The General Assembly enacted House Bill 166, which amended the definition of pension and retirement plan, benefit plan, and the tax ordinances, which basically are our tax ordinances, so we are required to change these. Therefore, this will be the first of three readings on this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Stotin. First of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 25-19. Are there further ordinances that come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we have Temporary Ordinance 11-19 tabled and will remain tabled until after the November election. Is there any unfinished business this evening? Mrs. Teener?
Yes, I wanted to address the Hubert South fraud. Have we decided what to do with that for Halloween? Is there going to be an officer there?
Yes, there is.
There will be an officer?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Teener. Thank you. Mr. Martin, further unfinished business this evening?
Just maybe a procedural note.
Mr. Hall?
In terms of us having long-term obligations where we previously made commitments, is there, is there an oper, I'm not sure exactly how to say this, we have $180,000 obligation where we have a 10-year note. At some point in the future, we may decide, somebody might make a motion to not honor that debt, and I'm wondering if there's any way, whether we can have a structural process in place once we've made that commitment, that we don't have to vote on it again or we don't have to expose the city to a situation where a future city council might decide not to pay that bill.
Mr. Owen, I'm not sure that's the way it would work. Actually, Mr. Wolfinger, Treasuryal Wolfinger.
Would you like to take this?
Oddly nettles as the ball gets tossed across the court.
That buck is getting passed.
Yeah, someone's going to jail.
We have our own bond council for that. The attorney side, that deals nothing with debt. We are obligated to pay that debt back, so it's not something that will be agreement. You know what I mean? If they don't, it's an obligation of the city, no matter how you look at it. So it's, they're paying down the debt, so by how we're doing it is we're, on this note, you're borrowing money for 12 months, and then we re-borrow money each 12 months minus the principal pay down of it. So we owe on this debt to, that we borrowed from in order to pay it. So it's something that we have to do. There won't be anything that, I will be bringing this before council every year.
So hypothetically, if we would have a situation where a city council would vote no, and again, it's unlikely, but there are potentially other situations like this, would the city just use another mechanism to pay that bill?
You would have, yeah, you would have to pay it, no matter what. You'd have to pay it 100%. So you'd have to find the mechanism to pay 100% off of it, because what I do is pay the whole thing off and then re-borrow. That's kind of the mechanism. So if you choose not to refund it every year, the city's going to have to come up one way or another with courts with 100% of it to pay it off and just not re-borrow. That's the only thing. So if council in the future would say, we're not going to re-borrow, then we'd just have to pony up to pay off the entire amount and be done with it.
That's helpful. Thank you.
I could further, we, we had 1.8 million dollar cost overrun on top of an 82.2 million dollar bond. We could have took another bond out for the 1.8. The cost of doing that bond with the rates and bond council and the underwriting is very expensive for that, that size. So our alternative, we can renew a note for up to 10 years, and which is what we've done, and the courts agreed to pay $180,000 a year for 10 years, which equals at 1.8. That's the only way we could legally fund that debt. But it is an obligation of the city of Lancaster.
I understand that. And I don't want to, you know, extend this conversation anymore than what I, what I have. It just seemed to me that we were voting on an issue that we had a clear obligation and a previous commitment. And I was just wondering, you know, what would happen if we would decide at some point in the future not to honor that commitment?
Well, we're in default with the, holding our note. And they could sue us and attach money, treasury, whatever. Just like your car loan, just like your home loan, just not making payments.
That's helpful. Again, I've probably made more out of this issue than what I intended. And I appreciate the clarification.
Not paying it, might force us into bankruptcy and we don't need that.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I understand what you're saying. You know, it seems interesting that every year we have to vote on it because we know we're obligated to it, but it's just kind of the way, kind of the way it goes. And so the auditor will bring this for the next, what, eight years, right? Because this is only year two, three?
Year three.
Mr. Stoughton says three. Seven more years. See, we took a year off already for that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Further unfinished business this evening? Is there any new business this evening? Mr. Groff?
Mr. President, in relation to the previous legislation that we discussed on the annexation of Timbertop, we've had a couple of gentlemen back there with us this evening. Mr. Tony Perez of the Lemon Group Development and Mr. Tom Winkart, the attorney for the Lemon Group. And I'd like to ask that we take a minute or two so that they may introduce themselves. And if council has any questions at this point for to hold up, have a shot.
Thank you, Mr. Groff. Gentlemen, welcome.
Hi, my name's Tony Perez. I'm with Lemon Development. I'm an owner. 1201 South Main Street, North Canton, Ohio, 4472O. We're a development company based out of North Canton. Been in business for about 40 years. Concentrated on mixed-use developments all across the state of Ohio. The last 10 years or so, we've really concentrated on senior living. We currently have 20 senior living buildings in the state. We own, manage, and operate everything. We're up to about 1,500 employees. And we're very excited to be here to, to further discussion on the Timbertop property. Our 78 acres, it's a mixed-use development that we're proposing. Obviously, we're going through the annexation right now. We were also going to start working through zoning. But that's going to be a mixed-use property, multi-family. We're looking at a skilled nursing piece. Obviously, our senior living piece that, that'll take up approximately 16 acres. Villas, senior living, a residential care facility licensed through the state of Ohio. And then an apartment piece as well. The northwest corner, we're looking at some residential. So we're just happy to be here. Obviously, we'll be seeing and talking to you guys more. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. My name's Tom Winkart. I've had the opportunity to serve as legal counsel for Lemon Development for 30 years, actually, this month. And have had a wonderful opportunity to work in probably three dozen communities similar to Lancaster. We've developed a lot of cool, multi-use properties, residential, commercial, industrial properties. And it's been a really good opportunity, I think, with each one of the communities that we've worked in to have had something that, that both the village, the municipality, or the township, and also the development owners have been very proud of. So we look forward to working with the administrative team in this council on what we hope to be another great project for us and a great project here in Lancaster. And on a side note, I've served for 20 years on a public school board. And I always love coming to communities that still open their public meetings with prayer. So I applaud you guys for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. If you'll too, just, if you're willing to just hang for a second. Is there any question, are there any questions for members of council tonight? Well, thank you for being here. And we look forward to continuing with the process with you over these coming weeks and months.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further new business this evening? Ms. Teener?
I just have a question. I can't remember when. It was in 2015 or 2016. We had voted about the beverage area in the downtown. Where exactly are the perimeters to that? I cannot remember. I thought there was a, where are the perimeter of that?
There are perimeters and they're signage posted. But if you can elaborate, I'm trying to remember them, but I can't.
The designated outdoor refreshment area, the boundaries are Memorial Drive, High Street, Wheeling Street, and Walnut Street.
I just don't remember it being that large of an area for some reason. I, I've seen the signs. I've seen the one at Memorial and Main. And then I noticed there's been one up on Walnut and High. And I just don't recall it being that far, that big of an area.
I think that it was. I think those were the boundaries that were designated.
Yeah, it's actually more or less complies with the CID boundaries. The CID boundaries are Main Street from High to Memorial, Main, Wheeling, and Walnut from High to Memorial. And Columbus and Broad Street from Wheeling to Walnut.
Okay.
Okay. Very good.
You can trip a long way then.
Yeah, I sure can, right up there.
Okay.
Further new business this evening?
I have a funny feeling you're ruining the risk of it.
Roll down the hill?
Ms. Bobbitt?
And I just have one question. Just wanted to make certain. We received this from Debbie Carrasco. Did you say this was from the police? Lancaster Police, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further new business this evening? If not, then we'll ask the clerk to read our scheduled upcoming meetings.
Well, we have three scheduled meetings. That can always change. Our next meeting is next Monday, November 4th. The meeting following is November 25th. The meeting following that is November 16th. All meetings are here in council chambers at 6:30 PM. Upcoming special meeting, oath of office, Monday, December 30th at 6:00 PM at Olive Dale Senior Citizen Center. I'll be in contact with you after the election, each of you. Upcoming committee meetings for the next 30 days. Finance Committee meeting November 4th, 6:00 PM here in council chambers. Service, November 8th at 7:30 AM at the House Department Conference Room. Safety Committee, November 13th at 7:30 AM at the City Hall 1897 Room. Economic Development, November 14th at 7:30 AM at City Hall 1897 Room. Water, Water Protection Control, November 20th at 7:00 AM at the Water Protection Control Conference Room. And finally, Finance Committee, November 25th at 6:00 PM here in council chambers.
Thank you very much. Is there any bills this evening?
There is one payable to PNC for a publication of legislation in the MNCO paper, $132.10.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there a need for an executive session this evening? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Please remember to sign your legislation. Have a great night.